All right, good evening. I'd like to call to order the Lakewood City Council Meeting in Lakewood, Colorado on July 24th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. For those engaging this evening via telephone, the number is 720-707-2699. And that ID to get in is also the same as the web ID, which is 870-1796-0123. You'll press pound, pound to go ahead and get into that meeting. To welcome everybody who's with us tonight in chambers and those who are joining online. We'll have a couple of different opportunities for public comment on different issues. If you haven't signed up for general public comment, you can do so in the back. With that, I'll ask the clerk to please call roll.
Paul.
Here.
Oliver. Maia Guerrero. Absent. Stewart.
Here.
Franks.
Here.
Strom.
Here.
Jansen.
Here.
Sharzai.
Here.
Springsteen is absent. Vincent.
Here.
And Abel. Mayor Paul, you have a quorum.
Great. All right, so item three is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're able to stand, please join, and we'll remain standing for a moment of silent prayer.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, please be seated. Mr. Rob, could we clear the...I can do it, never mind. All right, item four is our statement of conflict of interest. If there is anybody that feels that they need to be recused or somebody needs to be recused by not themselves, please feel free to do so. And then, next up, item five. Read item five into the record. Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Item five, proclamation, National Disability Independence Day.
All right, so I'm going to invite folks, if you're here for this proclamation, please feel free to come down. Mr. Mace, Mr. Cooper, I know you two are here. I just wanted to make sure you got down there. So this is a great opportunity and like to thank Mr. Mace and Mr. Cooper as our ADA coordinator. So we have this wonderful proclamation to celebrate National Disability Independence Day. Whereas National Disability Independence Day on July 26th commemorates the signing of the Americans with Disabilities Act, which took place in 1990, guaranteeing equal rights, protections, and opportunities for individuals with disabilities. And whereas the city of Lakewood recognizes the resilience, strength, and achievements of individuals with disabilities contributing to our community's rich fabric. And whereas the city of Lakewood upholds the principles of the ADA, ensuring equal access to employment, transportation, public services, housing, and recreational opportunities. And whereas we value diversity, promote accessibility, and embrace the talents of individuals with disabilities. And whereas Lakewood proudly offers inclusive programs and partnerships that empower individuals with disabilities to engage in a wide range of activities and experiences. Such programs include Camp Aha, our summer camp that welcomes all community members regardless of ability or disability, a program that provides recreation, education, and therapeutic opportunities in a safe and fun day camp environment for everyone. Special Olympics track and field, swimming, football, basketball, and bowling teams that promote physical fitness, social interaction, personal growth, teamwork, skill development, and sense of achievement. And Lakewood's partnership with Feel the Beat at the Charles E. Whitlock Center, an organization that offers immersive dance experiences through the use of innovative dance floor with bone-conducting technology. Participants who may be deaf or hard of hearing can feel the rhythm and vibrations of the music, allowing them to have an experience that is truly one of a kind and provides a whole new way for them to enjoy the joy and expression of dance. And whereas Lakewood is also proud to announce the launch of the Access Lakewood, a comprehensive initiative aimed at promoting accessibility and inclusivity within our community. This program will enhance residents' ability to connect with the city on items related to accessibility and serve as a platform for Lakewood to share accessibility plans and successes. Successes such as Lakewood's updated self-evaluation and transition plan, which is a roadmap that will guide city staff as they enhance accessibility in our parks, facilities, digital platforms to ensure equal opportunities for all residents to engage and enjoy the offerings of our city. Now therefore, I, Adam Paul, Mayor of the City of Lakewood, hereby proclaim July 26th as National Independence Day in the city of Lakewood, Colorado. So we have two special guests. I don't know who would like to go first. Mr. Mace?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Billy.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I do just want to also thank City Council for their support with accessibility and City of Lakewood City Manager's Office as well. Really excited for this program and to continue to enhance our accessibility. Also want to thank our community advocates, such as Mr. Mace, that continue to make sure that we improve accessibility for all of our community members.
I thank you, council. And just to let you guys know, this is a little emotional for me because, A, living with, just living with the challenges like this, independence is very important to every person that either walks with a walker, has a wheelchair, or anything that's...any type of equipment, because that's what we use. My wheelchair is my legs, and I want you guys to be aware, you guys can just get up and walk away from your chair. I can't do that. What I can do is, it takes a lot of help for me to get out of my chair every day. So I just feel like this council should respect people with mental and physical challenges. And I thank you because without your leadership, we couldn't do this. And without DRC's leadership, we definitely couldn't do this. So, thank you very much. Thanks.
Actually, can I wait and stay down since I'm speaking? Yes.
Could we please let the record note that Councilors Abel and Maia Guerrero are with us? Okay, this is the point in the meeting where the public is invited to address the City Council on items that did not appear on the agenda. All comments should be directed to the City Council. I ask that all persons calling in or in person observe the decorum of City Council chambers. If you are online and you wish to speak under general public comment, you can go ahead and press star nine now. When you're at two and a half minutes, you'll hear, and when your time is up, you will hear that one more time. And for those of you who are participating in chambers, you have a timer, and when your time is up, I'll politely try to wrap you up. With that, first up, Mr. Mace.
Now it's time for me to get serious here. I have a very important, very important question for council. The question that I have for council is this: What is the city of Lakewood doing about the fentanyl situation? It is growing, and it is growing heavily. I smell that stuff all over the city, not all over the city, not just all over the city, but on the buses, everywhere. And I want to know what council plans on doing about it. So anybody can get back to me, would be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, sir. Ms. Welch, you're up next. And I will note while you're coming up that there were four comments on Lakewood speaks this evening. And Ms. Bailey, you'll be next. Yeah, welcome.
Hello, I'm Miriam Welch. I work at an organization in Lakewood called Serve Spot Lakewood. We were started by three coalitions started by the mayor coming together to increase collaboration and leverage resources between the groups. And the coalitions are the Lakewood Faith Coalition, the Lakewood Service Club Coalition, and the Coalition to End Hunger in Lakewood. And we're working on a few different things, but what I came here today to talk about is Love Lakewood Day. On September 23rd, we will be hosting Love Lakewood Day, which is a citywide volunteer day where we're hoping to get a few hundred volunteers out, Lakewood citizens who care about the community and love Lakewood, to come and help support organizations and schools. So we're hoping to encourage folks to become regular volunteers at some of these locations and just increase volunteerism in Lakewood. So that's all.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Bailey, and then Ms. Kettner. All right, did you have a slide?
Yes.
Okay, we'll get that set up and get you going.
Thank you. Good evening.
Go ahead.
I'm here today to talk about Lux Cocktail Bar and Lounge located at 7576 West Jewel Avenue in Lakewood. Our townhouse community, Green Gables Townhomes, to the south, is directly impacted by Lux operating in such a fashion as to be detrimental to public health, comfort, convenience, and safety. Our documented issues are the music volume, the bass that's emanating from the property and cars, loud yelling, lights from cars in the parking lot, a grease container outside, poker, revving of engines, and most recently, public urination. Our last presentation, we provided the following: Three audible instances of music based in people that are negatively affecting the health and welfare of Green Gables residents using an iPhone. Eighteen signatures were obtained from impacted residents consisting of 15 individual homes and a summary of address history check from Jeffcom 911. The issue has been ongoing. Since our last presentation, we have new video evidence that was also taken with an iPhone. Please keep in mind that an iPhone does not capture the bass. Bass even at the property line may be low but higher further away because of the long wavelength. Bass also gets amplified by the buildings that are east and west as it easily travels through Lux's walls. Also, the lights emanating from the property disturb the residents. It's as bright as if it's in the middle of the day. It's the complete opposite of a dark sky haven supported by the governor. So here's video one. Here's video two. Oops, sorry. And then as you, sorry, didn't play. And as you can see, the headlamp impact to the front of our homes. Patrons rev their engines and talk loudly even after the bar is closed. A motorcycle in Lux's parking lot generated the noise in this video. It clearly displays a complete disregard for the community and its neighbors. Lux operates in such a fashion as to make it impossible to sleep in clear violation of the Lakewood noise ordinance. It also violates Colorado State noise ordinance. And that was at 11:48 PM at night. Call to action: On occasion, the Lakewood police aren't able to visit, or they drive by on Jewel, the noise is truly amplified to the south. Three reported instances of public urination are visible to residents. When the agents do respond, they request that the noises to turn down. Once the agents leave, the bar continues to the previous condition, playing the loud music even after being sighted. Lux consistently violates Lakewood noise ordinances and willfully continues to do so. Government's role is to protect citizens. And this location is emboldened by an action. Please help us prioritize our health, welfare, and peace and quiet. Residents don't feel safe to sit outside at night given the issues. Strict enforcement by Lakewood police isn't the answer. As you can see, the business should not be allowed to operate in close proximity to such high residential area. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Okay, Ms. Kettner, and that's exhaust the general public comment. Anybody online wish to speak under general public comment, non-agenda items?
Good evening, council. On the consent agenda this evening is a first reading for an ordinance that would effectively put a sunset on the Strategic Growth Initiative enacted in 2019 through voter-approved legislation. But the wording for this first reading is for an emergency ordinance temporarily enacting and enforcing a non-renewable anti-growth law. This title is misleading at best. For all publications referring to this ordinance on second reading, please make it clear that this ordinance is referring to the 2019 voter-approved Strategic Growth Initiative, not LMC 14.27 or any other host of misleading terms, but the very recognizable 2019 voter-approved Strategic Growth Initiative. Thank you.
Just a reminder, this is for non-agenda items, so...
That's why I kept it about...
Yep, thank you. All right, anybody else wish to speak under public comment, non-agenda items? Ms. Duffy?
Good evening. I would just like to remind everyone that next Tuesday is National Night Out. Our neighborhood has a really big picnic. We have a face painter, we have a balloon twister, live music, lots of food, and Danny Ray's, our new restaurant over on Colfax, yay, another new restaurant, they're going to provide the food. There'll be lots of food. And since our neighborhood is half in the county and half in the city, we enjoy. The sheriff comes on horseback normally. The county brings a full-size road grader. The Lakewood police come, and they come in an old 50s police car, and our neighborhood loves it. For most of us, the only time we interact with our police, with our law enforcement, is when we're the victim of a crime. And quite frankly, we're having a really bad day. So this offers our residents a chance to interact with our law enforcement when we're having a good time, and I think it's really important. So I encourage other neighborhoods to do the same thing, and I invite all of you to come to our picnic. There'll be lots of food. Did I say lots of food? That's why sometimes it looks like a law enforcement convention because all of them come, because there's lots of food.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? All right, I'll close general public comment. Certainly appreciate the concerns about the fentanyl crisis and something that we take very serious as well as all levels of law enforcement. I think you did see there was a large bus that our task force was part of, which was substantial, I think, last week or the week before, but some that's front of mind for all of our law enforcement authorities. For our friends who are dealing with the Lux issue, our city attorney's office and police department are working hard on this. I know certainly it doesn't, things don't always happen fast, but there's things in place that are happening right now. Our Love Lakewood folks left, but got a great briefing on that, so look forward to that. And thank you for reminding everybody about National Night Out and the Daniels is a great party as there are lot, and it's a 1971 police car, I think. Yeah, we were born in 69, so 70 or 71, okay. We being the Lakewood Police Department. Okay. Next up is the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda has been made to expedite council action. It contains both resolutions and first reading ordinances. Resolutions are items of a routine nature. Members of the public will have an opportunity in a moment to comment on any of the proposed resolutions. First reading ordinances appear on the agenda only for the purpose of setting future public hearing dates and ordering the newspaper publication of the proposed ordinance. No public comments will be heard this evening on first reading ordinances. The public will have the opportunity to comment on the proposed ordinances during the scheduled public hearings on the date set tonight by City Council. Any council member may request an item on the consent agenda be removed for separate discussion and/or action under general business. I will note that item seven, which is Resolution 2023-41, has been pulled by the applicant. So that is the approving the service plan for Indigo at Red Rocks Metropolitan District. That is removed, so there'll not be any comment on that. And with that, Counselor Maia Guerrero?
I would like to, sorry, I would like to pull item nine.
Okay. So we'll put that in. Just to clarify, that's just for the setting of the public hearing. Thank you. So that would leave only item eight, which is approving minutes of the City Council meeting. So I'll ask the clerk to please read item eight into the record.
The consent agenda consists of item eight, approving minutes of the City Council meeting, City Council regular meeting, July 10th, 2023.
Same, I wish to speak on item eight, approval minutes of the City Council meeting. Seeing none, I'll close that, and I'll ask for a motion approving item eight.
Mayor Paul, I move for the approval of City Council minutes on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Will somebody vote for Counselor Franks, please? Thank you. Okay, passes 10 aye, zero nay. Okay, will the clerk please read item 10?
Item 10, ordinance O-2023-28, amending Title 15, Chapter 3 of the Municipal Code of the City of Lakewood, Colorado, in connection with the registration of vacant properties within the city.
I'll now open the public hearing on ordinance 2023-28. Planning Director Mr. Travis Parker is here to provide a presentation. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Happy to be back. We've had several discussions on the vacant property ordinance, and tonight you have the proposed ordinance in front of you. So the ordinance in front of you applies to properties that have been vacant for 30 or more days. It requires registration with the city of these properties. Registration includes payment of a biannual fee, provision of emergency contact information for the property, and other basic information about the property, including outstanding lawsuits, et cetera. The ordinance allows for property inspections, so either voluntary property inspection authorized by the property owner or the seeking of municipal warrants to allow the city to inspect the properties, and provides maintenance and posting requirements on the property. Within six months of registering a vacant property, the property owner must provide a plan for the eventual re, getting that property back into active public use, as well as maintenance and security of that property during its period of vacancy. The ordinance does allow for the provision of additional security and maintenance requirements where those are warranted by conditions on the ground, and provides for penalties and other ways to deal with non-compliance of abatement of maintenance issues. And I'll stop there and sit down and be happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Oh, okay, thank you. Counselor Vincent?
Yes, I was wondering if it's possible. I would have asked this before, but a constituent brought it to my attention because it is an issue. Can we make sure that those vacant properties are posted with an address? Address of the property. Oftentimes, they aren't, and then people have difficulty finding out where to report, how to report.
Yes, the ordinance does allow for us to create policies and regulations, and we can certainly add that to our administrative policies.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to hold. I have Councilors Jansen and Maia Guerrero, but I also have public comment. So I'm going to open up public comment for this ordinance. And Ms. Duffy, you're representing Daniels-Wilchester, so you are up. Anybody else wishes to speak on this? Please come down and see the clerk, or if you're online and wish to speak, please raise your hand.
Not a pretty picture, is it? This is a really important ordinance, and it's time. It's time. There's a lot of properties. Now, the pictures you're going to see tonight, and I brought, I think, maybe four of them. I only went one block. These pictures are all on the same block in a nice area in Lakewood. So what you can't see is there is a house behind that tree. Behind all of the garbage, there is a house. It is vacant. This is a, by definition, this is a vacant property. It's been like this for over 10 years. The city has struggled. I've talked to building, I've talked to code enforcement, and their hands are tied. It's really time for this ordinance to help clean up things like this. This house was condemned a few years ago. It is uninhabitable. Well, it's inhabited by rats, and there are people that go in and out, but as you see, this is just one person's trash on a vacant lot. So what happens when we have this? It's an eyesore. It's a health hazard. It's definitely a fire hazard because the house behind that, the holes in the roof are six, seven feet wide. So it rains in, it's ready to fall down. There'll be kids in there sometime, and it will fall down on them. So it's a, it's a security issue, it's a health hazard, but what else it's doing is it's spreading. It's just like any other virus or disease. It's spreading, and it's spreading to the rest of the block. You want to show the next picture? So this is, hmm, six houses down. So these people have had that trash out there for over three weeks now. Maybe they think it's going to disappear. They just don't want it in their house. They keep bringing more out, and it's been like this for three weeks. It doesn't go away. But why would they care? They see that house half a dozen... They see that house, half a dozen houses down, he can have all of his trash out there. Nothing's going to happen to them, so they put all their trash out there. So as houses on this street, people have gotten fed up and sold. This house, my daughter and her family also live on this, this block, and this is her view now from her deck. The neighbor next door to her sold, she was fed up with it, and she sold, and the people, I mean, this is why they bought on this street, is because of the house at the end of the block. They moved in five junk cars and two broke-down trailers into the yard, and that's where they sit. So now we've got three houses on one block. You want to show another one? This is my view now from my kitchen window. So they advertise, my next-door neighbor advertised their house that they had off-street parking for campers, trailers, and what have you. So I have a rust and green-colored old broke-down truck with junk in the back, and another broke-down truck, and that's what I see out my kitchen window now. So as you can see, for 10 years, it was just the one at the end of the block, but now, as houses are selling, they assume this is okay, because he can do it, he can have all of this out there, so it must be all right. The people across the street from me moved in, and for the first year, they never took their trash cans in. They left them at the street. They literally took their garbage out to the street and put it in the trash can. The Lakewood snowplows had to go around their trash cans. Finally, code enforcement came and asked them to please put their trash cans off the street onto their own property. This is an important ordinance, and I want you to take it seriously, but I'm not sure it goes far enough. I was reading the penalties, I mean, the violation and penalty section, 1503100, strict liability offenses, it's unlawful and a municipal offense, but it doesn't say, here's what we're gonna do to you, here's, here's the fines. I mean, I love it that there's abatement and that the city can come in and take this, clean it up, and then put a lien on the property. I mean, even that house at the end of the block, I mean, it's gonna take a lot to clear it out, but the lot is worth a lot, the city'd get their money back. So this is really important. It's spreading. I'm just showing you one block, it's spreading all over our community. This has got to be stopped. I mean, and the code enforcement people, they're frustrated, they don't have any more recourse. The building department, they don't have other resources. This is something that, I don't know that it goes far enough. If you're gonna do this, and you're doing it now, do it right. One of the people on the block sold their house. She was fed up. She started, she had a nice four-bedroom house, fireplace, very nice house. She started at 6:50, which we all know is not a lot in today's world. Nobody would come and look at it. When they drove, they'd make an appointment and they'd drive to her house. They wouldn't stop, they'd just keep on going. She came down $100,000, $130,000 over time, and finally sold it to them, to the people with the rust and green-colored truck. So congratulations to my neighbor for getting out. I would like to at some point, but I know I can't sell, I know nobody's gonna, I mean, the block is, it's time. Thank you for bringing this, thank you for hearing it, and I want you to take it seriously. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Anybody online wish to speak on this? Okay, I'll close public comment, and we'll go back to questions. So I have Councilor Jansen, Mayat Guerrero, and Olber.
Thank you. This is a very interesting ordinance, and I do understand it. There's, on the fees, I just wondered, I know, I think council's going to propose those fees, do we have any idea about where those would be?
At this time, we don't. They need to be based on the city's costs in administering the program, so if this ordinance is approved, we will do that study and come to you with a proposal based on the city's anticipated costs.
On the service fee, do you know how much that costs about approximately?
What do you mean by the service fee? Excuse me.
If there is a call for service?
Ah, no, we don't know what that would be yet either, but we'll bring you that number as well.
Okay. So I, I get it, but sometimes people have to sell their home, and it might be vacant for 30 days. Obviously, that's, this is gonna be for that also. So someone has a house on the market, and the people have to move to their new home, and their house hasn't sold in appropriate time, in 30 days, they were gonna have to pay this fee. Is that correct?
Not necessarily, no. This ordinance does allow, in fact, basically requires the creation of administrative rules around this with exemptions, and that's one of the obvious exemptions, is for properties actively listed for sale.
Okay, that's, that's where I was at. All right. Yeah, and I just saw there's some unintended consequences with this. I know there's gonna be a few bad apples, obviously, on one block, there's a lot of bad apples that are falling on that one. And I can see where something like this might happen, but like I said, the unintended consequences, but as long as I know, we can go through and add more instances and say, I like that idea. So thank you.
You, Councilor Mayat Guerrero?
Thank you. All right. This question is perhaps for staff, but also perhaps just actually for other members of council. My recollection is that we had some discussion on this concept about the real intended purpose, right? Is this really focused on commercial properties, longstanding vacant properties, properties of ownership of folks that are out of state, not Lakewood residents? Is this about corporations, or businesses, or LLCs even, that own properties? Or is it meant to penalize individual homeowners, longtime residents who have fallen, who have fallen on hard times? And I think that this program seems very important, I'm generally really in favor of how we have it set up, but I continue to have concern about that particular question of it. So for me, what makes sense in terms of what a property's role really is regarding like the stewardship of private property, is more in that space of longtime vacant properties, empty lots, and commercial spaces. So I know one of the original conversations was about like the Sears lot, and all of those things that have been happening over there, or even about 10th and Sheridan, which is like being addressed. And so I wonder, either of other council members have sort of like thoughts based on that from our last conversations, or if staff have thoughts based on that? I feel, I don't, I don't wish to ramble, but I feel that it's a bit inappropriate for us, particularly given like the current economic state of things and the housing crisis, to decide that potentially even just having uncovered windows or long weeds might be enough to categorize an individual longtime resident of Lakewood's home as vacant, just because they maybe aren't either physically able, monetarily able, et cetera, to maintain. And I recognize that that can feel frustrating for neighbors around that property, and I really understand that and empathize with that, but also, that's like the nature of being a homeowner, right? Some people are really great at that, and some folks are less attentive, and I know that it's our role to penalize for that.
Counselor, thank you, and that's a, that's actually a great question, because I think a couple of weeks ago, we passed a more of a residential type code under the building codes, that was able to address more of these issues. So could we get some clarification?
We certainly did. I think, I think the issue that you're talking about is occupied properties that are having maintenance challenges, and that, yeah, the council did pass a separate code to address that situation. This would only ever apply to properties that are physically unoccupied.
Counselor, go ahead.
Yeah, if I can just add, in the definition, sorry, let me find the exact spot, Section 1, subsection C, I believe, sorry. In the evidence of vacancy, that is really specifically what I'm talking about. So, you know, I wanted to ask clarifying questions before I might run an amendment on this section, because it says that it can be any of these conditions combined or on their own, and then that list includes accumulation of newspapers, flyers, and/or mail, past due utility notices, or disconnected utilities, accumulation of trash, junk, or debris, absence of window curtains, blinds, or shutters. So again, those are things where the way that it's currently defined seems to me that you could have one of those things decide that it's such a pain that it must be vacant, whereas we know if you fall on really hard times, actually, utilities are one of the very first bills that people stop paying for, rather than transportation, mortgage, or rent, or food, right? And so, again, I can, I can really appreciate why we want to have a lot of tools to deal with continuously problematic neighbors, but I don't think that that's like the intention of this program, and to the mayor's point, we did tighten some of our other codes for that reason.
No, you're exactly right. Yeah, the intention of this code is not to use those evidences of vacancy to prove that a occupied property is in fact vacant, but instead, the challenge that I think code enforcement and the city sometimes has is when we have, when we do have out-of-town or corporate ownership of properties, or out-of-state trusts that own properties, and being able to, giving our city employees the tools to prove that these properties are actually vacant when, that we have uncooperative, out-of-state ownership.
Thank you, that's helpful. I wonder, I wonder if perhaps we should just be clear that that's our intention with that definition? So I'll offer something at the appropriate time.
So I have Counselor over?
Okay. Yeah, the very first thing I wrote down is like, does this apply to residential properties? So I echo what the counselor just said, is like when we went through this before, I was under the impression we were talking mostly commercial properties, and in fact, in the presentation, you showed obviously a commercial property. And so would this, okay, but then the example we had was a residential, a house. If we wanted to clean that up, would we use this new ordinance, or would we use existing code? And so, I would, okay, the better question would be, if we want to clean that up, don't we already have existing code that we could use to go in and make them clean that up somehow?
So, so we do have the code that council has recently passed around property maintenance. I think the problems can be compounded where you have an out-of-state owner of a property that is actually vacant, and is being left to rot. And that's where this, the provisions of this code can give the city additional tools to get that building demolished, or get that, that property back in active ownership for, like the, like the property on Mrs. Duffy's block. I think, I think the bigger problem that we generally deal with is commercial properties, but there are certainly instances of vacant residential properties with out-of-state ownership.
Okay. Yeah, I'm definitely worried about elderly homeowners who fall behind, and then suddenly we're requiring inspections, and we're requiring this, and it just snowballs, and they just wind up losing their house. That's basically the very last thing. So it scares me a bit, but I'd love it to go after commercial, out-of-state, yeah, for sure. And, I don't know, I, I don't know enough about it truthfully to say that it's not going to be used against some elderly residential, and will be used all the time. I wish there was some way we could codify that.
It sounds like council wants a way to ensure that this property, this ordinance is only used on actual vacant properties.
Yeah, thanks.
If it's not in there, maybe we need to clarify that language.
So Lauren Stanek with the city attorney's office, and I will direct you all, again, looking at the definitions where, under, let's see, if you look at 15.03.010L, where it defines vacant property and/or vacant structures, because both terms are used throughout this chapter, it specifically means a property that is not lawfully inhabited by human beings for a period in excess of 30 days. So some of the concerns that councilors have mentioned this evening, such as, you know, a residence where the occupants have maybe allowed elements of the property to deteriorate or something along those lines, those types of situations are complaint-based, and they are addressed by code enforcement through usually the 9.80, our nuisance code, or the property maintenance code that was recently passed. So this would not be a situation where we would be charging anybody for a violation under this chapter. Additionally, when we look at that evidence of vacancy, the concern, and I definitely hear this, is that, you know, say that there aren't window dressings for a period of time. We have to be able to, as, as we go on later in the chapter, we have to be able to provide everybody due process, and say, we do want to cite somebody under this chapter, and cite them into Lakewood Municipal Court. We have to have probable cause to do so. If all we have is this, this location or this address hasn't had window coverings for 30 days, it's unlikely we would be successful. These are just criteria. We would probably have a number of them that would satisfy this, the evidence of vacancy before we would cite somebody under this chapter. I would also add that there is a chance, or there is an instance, where if there is a vacant property that has not registered and provided a plan, there is a chance that they would be cited for a violation to register under this chapter, but they may also be cited for a nuisance code violation or a property maintenance code violation. I could see that happening. So if there is both a vacant property or a property that we saw in public comment moments ago, where there's trash and debris, weeds in excess of, you know, 12 or 18 inches, things of those, that nature, we could certainly see instances where there are multiple violations for the same property owner. So, and one other thing, just to sort of maybe answer or address some of these concerns, I know our code enforcement staff, when they do receive a complaint about a property, they absolutely try to work with that property owner for a long time before they actually issue a citation into municipal court. So really, the hope is, is compliance. Same with a chapter like this, where, again, when, when staff goes to enforce this, if there's the ability to, let's say they post the notice, and somebody calls them and says, this isn't unoccupied, I have a lease, you know, a 12-month lease, here's, here's my lease as proof, that would certainly be a situation where it's likely going to be exempted under those regulations that Mr. Parker and his staff will establish. Same thing with like, we all know that there are certain buildings where there's scheduled, you know, maintenance or recesses, like schools or other things, they're not, the staff is not intending to enforce this against any of those types of exempt properties. So we've put some of the exemptions, such as having an active building permit, or something along those lines, but there are gonna be additional exemptions that are specifically written out, so that we don't run into situations where we're posting notices on properties that frankly are either occupied, or it's been less than 30 days, or they have some other reason why it's unoccupied and vacant.
Can I ask one more?
Thank you for that summary. Please.
How about snowbirds? You know, the, since it's, it's only 30 days, you know, and there's many, well, I don't know how many there are, but there's definitely people who live in Lakewood full-time, let's call it, but they go to south for the winter, and so they'd be gone three months, two months, or something like that. It sounds like this would catch them, as, like, that definition of lawfully inhabited might catch them. What does that mean?
Not lawfully inhabited, just means that there's nobody lawfully there, so obviously we want to avoid a situation where- we want to avoid a situation where, say, a property was vacant, trespassers have since gone in the property, so they're not lawfully there. It may be inhabited, but it's not legally inhabited. Snowbirds, as you've described, where people are gone for longer than 30 days, that's certainly something that Mr. Parker can build into the regulations, you know, to suggest that if somebody is going to be out of their property for a certain amount of time, oftentimes, or, and again, obviously, we have to see how this would operate in practice, but typically the concern with these vacant properties is that they have somehow fallen into, there's some sort of maintenance or deterioration. If it's, you know, a property that is otherwise in really good shape, you know, outwardly speaking, I don't know that there would be a complainant that would come forward. So I could certainly see a situation where people are, you know, a kind of a classic snowbird, they go away for, you know, the winter, and they have some sort of, you know, somebody shoveling the snow, somebody kind of keeping up the property in their absence. So I don't know that we would see a lot of those types of complaints, but that's something we can certainly put in those rules and regulations.
Okay, so I have Mayor Protem Strom, Counselor Franks, Counselor Vincent, and we'll circle back to Counselor Jansen.
First, I want to thank you for the clarification on properties for sale. That was one of my concerns, was, I know, you know, they're multi, we've got a job, we have to move to a different state, and we don't always have control over the timing of all of the factors that are included. So thank you. I wanted to personally respond to the question posed by Counselor Mayat Guerrero with regards to the original intent behind the conversation. For me personally, it was, it was two different things. One was public safety. We've had a cry out from many of our residents asking for us to do things that are making our community safer. And this is one of those things where we're looking intentionally at eliminating, or at least being more cognizant and working towards improving situations that are right now inviting criminal activity. So, public safety, number one. And second, it's fiscal, for me. The idea that every Lakewood resident is paying the bill for a property that has, you know, dozens of service calls every year is not something that I think is the best way for us to be, you know, quote-unquote, doing business, if you will. So it's creating a safer environment for our neighbors in our neighborhoods, but also making sure that property owners that choose to have vacant properties for especially multi-years, the city of Lakewood, the residents of Lakewood should not be footing that bill.
Counselor Franks.
Thanks, Mayor Paul. I did want to sort of weigh in, and while I do believe that it is important to, for me, to include all properties, I do want to pick up on what others have said. I did have an elderly neighbor who was in rehabilitation after a fall for quite some period of time, and their property was already struggling. They were older and did not have folks close by, so I really want the administrative part of this to take into account that not only do we have, obviously, code enforcement that can work with them, but we've got the, our neighborhood support team, which can bring resources to bear. The specific language that I want to talk about, though, is where it says there shall be a rebuttable presumption that a property is vacant if any of the evidence of vacancy conditions are present, and certainly not having window coverings is a personal choice. That's not something, you know, to have those. And so I just want to be really cognizant that we have situations where a property can be, possibly look like it's vacant and not. So I would like there to be some, at least in the administrative piece, where there needs to be some corroborating evidence that it's vacant in order to establish that before that process starts. Because I think once someone gets a note on their door that some condition is present, it sets up a defensive reaction to that. And so I just really want us to be very thoughtful, that we kind of explore those avenues. I think it's really important, we've had a few properties in my ward where there was a property dispute over a divorce, and the person who was able to retain the property decided to let it just erode, and it did become a problem. But we do have a lot of elderly residents who are shut-ins, maybe not able to get out. It may appear vacant, there may not be some comings and goings. So for me, I definitely want to be able to make sure that the rebuttable presumption is based on more than if any evidence is, but there's some corroborating evidence, really to get that body of evidence at the right level where we feel like that putting the notice on the door is warranted and would not be easily rebutted by someone, again, maybe saying my relatives in rehabilitation. So that's the comments I wanted to make. Thanks.
Mr. Parker's writing things down and shaking his head. Nodding. Yes, nodding, sorry. So then I have Counselor Vincent.
I'm sitting here thinking, I think all the questions that I had were probably asked, so I don't need to repeat them. So thank you.
Counselor Jansen, then Counselor Sherezadeh.
Thank you. So, as a consensus, as a council, I would like to see this just rewritten with, with everything that we kind of talked about. I don't think I can vote for it right now. It's like Counselor Olver said, it was a little scary. And to me, it is a little scary. But I can see something like this working with some problem areas that the city's having problems with. So thank you.
Counselor Sherezadeh.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Parker, you had suggested that the fees haven't been determined because we need to sort of assess what the cost would be to implement this ordinance. Is the fee structure meant to just pay for that, or is there a way that we could creatively apply any of the revenue from this?
My understand, certainly, we understood that the council would like to have some punitive fees associated with some of these properties. My understanding is that legally, our fees are limited to just cost recovery.
And just to add and expand upon that, Mr. Parker's correct. We have to, we are only allowed to charge for our actual costs in administering this chapter. However, if this, if an owner is charged for failing to register under this code, and that goes before the municipal court, or, you know, the judge would then set the fee in that instance. So part of the reason why all the fees are not outlined precisely is because there are going to be situations where we do need some flexibility. Is this somebody who, you know, the property was vacant for 60 days? Is this a commercial property that was vacant for 10 years? So the municipal court has, under the penalty provisions, can typically charge, or have a fine up to $2,650. Not to say that that's what they would, would fine someone, but that's why we also have some flexibility in the violations and penalty section.
That's great. And I would hate for us to be using this as a way to generate revenue. I understand needing to recover the cost to enforce this. I just wonder if some of those outlining situations, if that money then becomes available to some of the situations that we've described here, where maybe folks have fallen on hard times and would need some additional, could that, this all be rolled into that consideration, where we can offer some sort of financial support to help mitigate those challenges that some of our neighbors are facing, but may not necessarily be a vacant property? I wonder if there's just a fund available for that, that we could create.
So practically speaking, I don't know how this would work, but I do know that when the courts assess a fee, there's obviously, they have typically, there's a court fee, they call, sometimes call it a tax, but it's not a tax. There are also, in the fine schedule, they do have small amounts of fees that go sometimes to victim advocates, or, you know, to victims. And so I'm sure there's a way to do it, I just don't know what that looks like, or how, or what percentage of a fee could go to that.
And I guess a comment to that, maybe there's an opportunity for us to reach out to when we see a case like this, where it's an extreme case, where potentially an elderly person, or somebody who's just facing some challenging times, can connect them with Brothers Redevelopment, or another nonprofit in the community that could maybe help them, assist them with trying to do the cleanup, or whatever they need to do to get back into compliance.
Okay, so I'm going to take a motion and a second, and we'll go from there.
Mayor Paul, I move for the adoption of ordinance O-2023-28.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Please cast your votes. Will you vote aye for Counselor Franks? And Counselor Abel, we have you, so that passes eight ayes, two nays, the nays being Olver and Jansen. So thank you. Stanek, thank you as well. Okay, will the clerk please read item 11?
Item 11, ordinance O-2023-29, declaring the intent of the city of Lakewood to acquire interest in property for public purposes for pedestrian and stormwater improvements along West 20th Avenue, west of Nelson Street to the Quail Street Park, and authorizing negotiations with property owners, acceptance of conveyance instruments, and condemnation of real property interests, subject to further council approval.
Okay, open the public hearing on 2023-29. This was a presentation on Lakewood Speaks. Nobody has signed up to speak. Nobody online has signed up to speak. I will ask for a motion, please.
I move for the adoption of ordinance O-2023-29, on second and final reading.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Please cast your votes. Counselor, could we vote for Counselor, okay, there we go. That passes 10 aye, 0 nay. Will the clerk please reread item 9, back into the record under general business?
Item 9, ordinance O-2023-30, an emergency ordinance temporarily enacting and enforcing a non-renewable anti-growth law for the purpose of developing or amending land use plans or land use laws covering residential development, or the residential component of a mixed-use development.
So again, this is a first reading, and the opportunity to talk to counsel in between now and, I believe, August 7th is open to the community. So with that, I will ask for a motion to publish 2023-29 on the date specified under the consent. Is that accurate, August 7th, for publication? And so, just read the, yeah, the part of the script for the first reading ordinance.
I move for the, not adoption.
No, publication.
Publication of ordinance O-
2023-29?
2023-30.
30.
To be introduced on first reading, introduced on first reading, to be published in the Denver Post with public hearings set for the date included in the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Counselor Mayat Guerrero.
I recognize that I'm not making comments on this ordinance, but wanted to say, the reason that I pulled this, and am currently going to be a no vote on this first reading is because, really for two reasons. So one is that we had an opportunity to have a more candid legal discussion in an executive session, and we're not able to do that. And so I think that while I recognize that we have, are up against a legal deadline, that this is an opportunity for us to have really discussed our options, and really think about what we're being told, and understand the legal repercussions, and we weren't able to do that, so I don't feel comfortable moving forward on this. And then also, of course, that I specifically represent a ward with most of our growth, and also folks who mostly voted against the Strategic Growth Initiative. But I do want to reiterate that I continue to be really dedicated to the idea of having limitations to growth, to thinking about how growth makes sense, and how to encourage affordable housing specifically within Lakewood, and I look forward to continuing that conversation.
Great. Okay, Counselor Olver.
Yes, I don't like the title. And there is a comment on Lakewood Speaks about this exactly, where it says, "non-renewable anti-growth law." I'm not so sure that it's an anti-growth law. Certainly, some people believe that, and other people do not. I'm sure when it was voted on, it was not labeled anti-growth. And so I think somebody's jumping the gun on this one, and that the title should have been changed, or should be changed when it's done.
Counselor Jansen? Counselor Jansen, you're on mute.
On button, sorry about that. I agree with that, and, but it also, again, the Legislative Committee, we voted with a strong oppose against the 1255, which brought this about. Again, if you take out the anti-growth, because that has nothing to do with anti-growth. Our citizens have voted, voted for this, and we should be making sure that we had some kind of people there lobbying at the state level to make sure that, you know, our voices were heard, and that our citizens were heard. And I still have not heard if we did lobby as a city. I have not heard.
Counselor, just real quick, you're on the Legislative Committee, so certainly you can answer that yourself if you did any lobbying, but I think it's important to say that this is-
I was told staff, excuse me, Mayor.
No.
I was told staff was going to lobby.
I understand. So this is really spinning now, this is the posting of the first reading, so certainly valid question for second reading.
That's why this is in here, and that's why the executive session I couldn't vote for, because some answers, questions were not answered.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you.
Counselor Franks.
So I might be straying off into area that we can't discuss, but I, let me just at least tee up. I sort of speak to what Counselor Mayat Guerrero was talking to, where there was an opportunity for council to basically understand our suite of options that might be available to us in that meeting. We needed a supermajority for, we did not get a supermajority, so we could not get that information, which I personally believe would have been vital for this discussion. What I'm trying to understand, and again, I'll defer to Mayor and to our legal counsel, by not moving forward the emergency ordinance, that would just leave us with the ability to create an ordinance if that were the outcome of that discussion night of. So I'm trying to assess risk of not moving the emergency ordinance forward, knowing that we likely can't get legal advice from the DIA's. So any information that could be conveyed tonight, if there is any, would be helpful to inform my vote. But again, if, if that information would have been better served in an executive session, I realize we didn't have that. So can there be any information that indicates sort of the ramifications of, say, the emergency ordinance not being moved forward to a second reading?
And so, please.
Thank you, and I have a response. So just, just so council's aware, and I think many of you are aware, we've put this on tonight's agenda because we, under our, the city's charter, if we are going to have an ordinance that is not going to be enacted with the 30-day referendum as required, it has to be listed as an emergency ordinance, so that it could take effect at the special meeting on August 7th. Those, these are the only dates that we have available before this state law, the House Bill 231255 takes effect on August 8th. So that's just for scheduling purposes, that's what we've done. What I, how I can respond, Councilmember Franks, I can't talk about any legal ramifications, I can't provide any legal analysis this evening. Certainly, if they're at the public hearing on- Certainly, if they're at the public hearing on August 7th, if council directs us to do something else, whether that is, you know, draft a different ordinance, whether that is by motion, they're going to, you know, do something else by motion, that can certainly all be accommodated. There may be legal ramifications to doing so if we don't have something in place by August 8th, but I can't discuss those tonight.
Thank you. And council could still go into an executive session on the 7th. However, you know, that would still go back to where we were the other evening without the votes, potentially. Okay, so Counselor Abel?
Thank you, Mayor, finally. Ms. Mayat Guerrero seems to be taking issue with a parliamentary procedure that is contained within our charter. I would suggest if she doesn't like it, she could have it changed. We're about due for a charter election. Secondly, I believe the mere 14 pages of SGI contains a severability clause. Many of our ordinances contain severability clauses, so that in case one part of the law is found to be invalid, the rest of the law stands, the rest of the ordinance stands. So we have one aspect of this ordinance that has apparently failed, if you accept the Legislature's decision. But the rest then would remain intact. Either that, or we've been doing this all wrong all along in our routine passage of ordinance, which also contain severability clauses. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on a first reading. I did allow a little bit of flexibility, probably beyond what I should have, but I know this is an important topic. So, motion and a second to publish this for a second reading on August 7th. Please cast your votes. Well, just stick with us for a second, because I think we have to clear. Let's clear. Please recast your votes. Okay, and that passes 6 aye, 4 nay, the nays being Olver, Mayat Guerrero, Stewart, and Abel. Okay, there's no executive report tonight? Is that still accurate? Okay, thank you. We'll go into council reports by ward. We'll start with Ward 1.
No report, Mayor.
Yes, I would just first like to share that we have a ward meeting coming up on August 5th. We don't have a topic, so it sounds like I could guess what we'll be discussing at the ward meeting if I had to, though. It'll be 9:30 to 11:00 at the Holy Shepherd Church at 920 Kipling. And then I would just also like to share sort of my disappointment with how things unfolded around the executive session and the discussion that I was hoping that we could have around the Strategic Growth Initiative and its impact with 1255. And I know that there's not a lot of people who are playing inside baseball, but a lot of this is political theatrics, and it's a little bit disappointing that we're unable to sort of come to a conclusion and have a meaningful discussion because of that. So, thank you.
All right, Ward 2?
I just have one clarification. There was something that was posted, I guess in the Sentinel, or I guess it's called the Jefferson County Sentinel now, or whatever, that Lakewood had three safe parking places, and so I've gotten a lot of questions. No, we still just have the one, and there was zero that were commented on in Arvada, and they have two. So I just wanted to make that clarification, because I reached out to find out from the safe parking folks.
Counselor Mayat Guerrero?
I have no report this evening, thank you.
Great, thank you. Counselor Stewart?
My only report is that we had great office hours last week. Thank you to all of the residents who showed up. It was so lovely to get to meet with you and chat with you and hear the things that you care about. So thank you for showing up. That was the best part of my week, honestly, and go visit Peakview Park.
Ward 4?
No report.
Okay, this is going to take a minute or two, but not long. There's a, something came through today from Request Lakewood that came to myself and Counselor Franks, because, let me just read it, and then you'll know. It says, this is from Matthew, and he says, "There is a rumor that the City of Lakewood is considering moving some of Denver's homeless into some form of city-sanctioned and funded homeless shelter encampment. Is this true, a baseless rumor, or something in between?" And the answer, which is why I consider it's Ward 4, is, "Thank you for taking the time to write in. There is no truth to the rumors that the city is exploring a shelter in the area of Coyote Gulch." And so, that kind of confused me. He wasn't talking about Coyote Gulch, or he didn't say it in there, and I don't know where this, why the answer is talking about Coyote Gulch. Okay, because the subject line doesn't come through into Request Lakewood. But that just starts me down the road about Request Lakewood, because you've also, everybody here has seen a number of emails come in about the Ghost Bike on Alameda, there in between Jewel and C470, and how the city intends to take that down. And it's been there two years, and I just had a personal thing to add about that is, I mean, that was certainly a tragedy when she was killed. But one of the things I noticed, as you know, I bike a lot, is that after that happened and after the Ghost Bike went up, drivers seemed to me to be a lot more respectful around bicyclists. It seemed like there was almost a line in the sand. It seemed like that got so much publicity that it really changed the mental outlook of some of our drivers, and I thought that was a really good thing. And so I would like that thought to be taken into consideration, that this is more than just a memorial, a roadside memorial, where we have a policy about. It's actually something that is, should probably go on a little bit longer, and if we come to an arrangement with the family of something besides just a sign, something a little bit more, I think that would be a plus for Lakewood and for bicyclists everywhere. I did read this email because we need to clear up how council is given information. I would have just sent a letter to our city manager's office about this and said, "Can I get this guy's email?" And I'll straighten them out, because I got like at least six emails that were directly to me, and I think all of council, about the Ghost Bike, and there was at least four more that came in under Request Lakewood. And I did send a note to city council, or city manager's office, asking for the email addresses of those people, because I wanted to contact them, because it's one of the things I care a lot about. And was told, no, council cannot get information like that, because it's private. But the problem is, if you look out there and on Request Lakewood, some places it says it's private, some places it says, well, thank you. There was another one, one of the Ghost Bike emails, the response was, "Thank you for writing to Lakewood and council." Well, the council can't find out. And so also, like just looking at the FAQ, which I have now lost, under Request Lakewood, let's see, it's saying that, let's see, it's saying you should fill out, put in your personal information, and all these details are actually public, and as with all public records, the city must disclose those records if requested to do so. But at the same time, they're telling me, a counselor, that I can't get the email addresses of these people who are writing in. And there's quite a bit of times where I really do want to contact somebody, they're in Ward 4, they've got a question, and I'm like, I don't know how to contact them, and I ask the city more than once now about this kind of thing. And I think we need to clear this up, possibly under Request Lakewood, say, add a line. Your email will not go to your counselor. If you want to contact them, here's the link to the email addresses of all the counselors, or something like that. Because if you look at everything, and I could give you the whole list, sometimes it makes it sound like they're talking to a counselor, sometimes it makes it sound like they're not, and we're not getting those. We're not getting that information, so if you're, anybody out there listening right now, if you're sending something in to Request Lakewood and you think it's going to your counselor, it very well might not be. And they might want to respond to you, but they quite simply can't at the moment, and I think we need to clear this up. Thanks. And that was it. There was... Yeah, that'll do for tonight.
Ward 5?
No report.
Mayor Protem?
Just a reminder that we have our Ward 5 meeting coming up on the first Saturday of August. I think it's August 5th. I apologize. And we will be learning, we've got Liz Black of 4D West coming down to educate Ward 5 on all the great things that are going up and down Colfax, including the hub. My name at Westwoods Community Church.
Okay. I will close this out with a couple things. I would just mention to council, and to the community, there was a great email from former Mayor Protem, Dave Skilling, that wrote in about the gen item that was actually polled pertaining to metro districts. And I know a couple years ago, through staff and council, they did an incredible job kind of putting together a framework of what potential metro districts should look like. And there's a lot of misinformation about these, but we received correspondence today from people saying, "How dare you put this on," or "How come this is coming from the Planning Department?" Any property owner in Lakewood has the opportunity to petition their well-being or what they'd like to see brought forth. We don't pick and choose that. However, we do have an ability to put better guardrails around different things. And I think while other areas of the city continue to burden all the development, some others don't, and I would encourage future councils to look at the ability to reengage. It was a very well, very well-thought-out piece of legislation that would, I think, helped this situation tonight, for sure. So I wanted to mention that. I'd also just like to mention, it was unfortunate that we weren't able to go into an executive session. I know this issue is quite polarizing, but it's very important for us to be able to hear from our legal counsel about all the different aspects of this law, and that's what they're there for. And they spent a lot of time preparing and researching for us to be able to have that conversation. And so it's unfortunate, and to Counselor Mayat Guerrero's point, it doesn't lend itself for great policy on a second reading, and that's what we're forced with now, but we will certainly get through it, however council sees fit. And this continued question of, from a member of our Legislative Committee, I'm curious, potentially, did you reach out to your state electeds? We certainly, I can speak for myself, I did. I reached out to the Cairo Municipal League, I reached out to the governor's office. I offered different abilities to keep potentially our things in place that were voter-approved, and it didn't go anywhere. So there certainly was a lot of back and forth and inside comments, trying to make not only this bill, but also 213 better in different ways. So there you have that, a lot of conversations did take place to represent the position of the City of Lakewood, both on 1255 and 213. And on a really cool note, and hats off to our Lakewood Police Department, they honored a Tuskegee Airmen, Lieutenant Colonel James Harvey, celebrated his 100th birthday two weeks ago, and was offered a police escort, not only from our agency, but multiple agencies that brought him from the Green Mountain area out to Wings Over the Rockies for his 100th birthday. Clearly, he was born in 1923, but he's a Congressional Gold Medal recipient. He retired in the military in 1965, served as a pilot in the Korean War. So, happy birthday. It was really cool to see him drive by and to see all the excitement and the police engaging in that. So with that, we will not see you next week, because it's a fifth Monday, and we'll see you on August 7th, and we are adjourned. see you on August seventh, and we are adjourned.